Third budget work session, the order. We're waiting. I think Councilman Sabatini is downstairs with the mayor. So we'll wait for him to come up. And Councilwoman Trinell is in the other room for a quick hardboard meeting with one of her constituents. So hang out for a couple of minutes. I know everybody at home that's watching. We can just let you know that we'll be starting within a few minutes. If they get tied up, then we'll just fill them in on where we are.
Are we starting or are we gonna just sing some Christmas carols?
Oh, well, I'll just sing a couple while we're waiting.
Okay.
I can hum into the microphone.
Okay, get it.
Can I do my intrusion?
Find out if Pat's gonna be long downstairs. If he is, we'll get started, because Robin says she's only gonna be maybe two, three minutes.
On Wednesday, is that why it's only raining? Freezing rain, none of that kind of stuff?
Okay, just so you know, we're already on TV. We've been waiting for...
The mics, the mics are on.
Okay, I just want to update everybody on where we are. Since then, Friday, myself, Greg Pezz, Councilwoman Trinell, the Solicitor, and Angie, our bookkeeper, to try to come up with ways to trim this budget. We basically went line by line, item by item, to see if there was any way we can reduce this budget in any way. So we were able to, if you look at your budget that the managers handing out, in the general fund, the year, we end up, Angie came in also Saturday, to put in all of October's actual numbers. So if you look at October, the last budget that's in your pocket says September actuals. So we now have October actuals, which changed a lot of the numbers around. And then some of the things, D-transfers, and if you go down to building permits, we end up estimating that this year will end around $83,000, and we were at $54,000 for 14. So in the green, or the one to the far right, is revenue that we increased. So just to show you, we can just pick a number, how we arrived at this number. So we now have the budget, instead of being $825,000 short, we're down to $616,571. Everybody has that number, $616,571. We took off, like Angie, about $200,000 today, from $825 to $616. Just using round numbers. So if you go through that again, you can see all the 2013 year-end and October actuals. I think we were not as conservative, Angie was.
Conservative.
Angie was very conservative when she was making it, and that's the way it should be, because you should be on the conservative end. But, and can things get worse? Can our interest rates go below 1%? Can housing market not come back? We're not projecting that it's gonna explode, but we're projecting increases in some of these funds. So with that being in mind, who wants to start on how we could trim this $616,571? And I have a couple ideas for everybody, but I'd like to hear if anybody else has any ideas first.
Maybe since you guys met, maybe you guys can tell us what ideas you have, because I, I mean, if you guys got to sit down and try to figure something out. I'm sorry that I wasn't here last week.
No, I know, I understand. Does any, I mean, we had a deficit at $825, so I just, it just got better. Does anybody have any recommendations on how to trim this budget?
I was interested in hearing, I know Mr. Gerard had said maybe he would come back with some numbers on that, that head tax that he was talking about? And I know I referenced to you guys that I was interested in hearing more about that. Were you guys able to talk to Dave about that, about any of the numbers that he may have come back with on that?
He actually gave me, he gave me a folder with, I guess, a copy of Bristol Township, I think does it. So I'll give you, I'll bring a copy over to, to the managers more, so you can give it out.
But is it something that you guys are interested in implementing, if we can?
Yeah, if it's something that, you know, that we can agree on, that could save, you know, take out of the budget, I mean, our deficit, absolutely.
But what exactly, we're talking about a head tax? I don't understand.
Dave Gerard was here and offered some kind, what's it called, Angie?
The local service tax. It's an EMS tax, it's emergency and municipal service tax. That's what the local service tax is.
So the tax, anybody that works, we're not sure how it works. He was supposed to get back to us with more information on how it's, it works, and if it's even possible to implement. I mean, is it possible?
It's not possible this 2014.
Okay. Right, because I think we need something now.
2015, yeah, we're, because we had to, an ordinance.
Has to be passed and everything?
Has to be passed. In 30 days.
Can you pass it for half of a year?
No, you cannot. No. I spoke to a representative from Berkheimer, and I was advised that we cannot do a half a year.
But with Dave's proposal, then, so that would be something more that we would be looking at for next year?
2015.
And we'd have to pass that ordinance this year before December?
No.
If we're...
We would have to pass it in 2014. 2014, before 15.
Oh, before 15, okay.
Betty, the idea was, what Dave floated as a tax was the idea that we don't, it's people who are working. So, not that anyone wants to tax anyone, but the idea from Dave's tax is that we only tax those people that are working, so that it doesn't hit senior citizens.
Working in this town, or working here in...
Well, that's something, that's something I think we needed a little clarification on as well, right? Because we weren't sure whether it meant people that just work in the borough or live in the borough or work.
Well, the good, the good thing about is now that, you know, it's something that we're not going to be able to do, we can get, you know, do more research on it, find out exactly how it works.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. Yeah, definitely something to look into and...
Oh, I asked him to come back and do a presentation on it.
Okay, that sounds good.
So hopefully, what we'll let him know is that it can't be done for 14, but if he could do a presentation in January or February, so we start implement, if we're gonna implement it for 15. But with some concrete numbers, not just, I talked to somebody and they said, he said a friend told him this is, this could be done. I mean, we really need to know.
No, well, he gave me, he gave me a packet, and it has, I guess, Bristol Township does it, so it was Bristol Township. So it's definitely something that has been done and implemented other places. So I...
Now, what I'm getting at, Tony, is what the borough can take in from this.
Right.
I'd like to bring in, if Berkheimer's the company that does this, is that who you called, Angie?
Well, there's Berkheimer, and I think there's Keystone, right, Mr. Dillon?
There's two companies.
Two companies.
Well, maybe we'll get him to come in and do a presentation and a projection on how much money the borough can receive from this tax increase.
Right, because I think compared Bristol Borough to Bristol Township, it's a lot different, right?
Yeah, you gotta have the right numbers. You don't want to implement a whole program and it doesn't amount to anything.
Right.
If it amounts to a lot, I mean, I think we're all interested in...
Sure, something to look at. Thank you.
Anybody else on this $600-some-thousand?
Yeah, well, there are some, some questions that I had, that I had written in the, in my binder. But even on the first, the second page, two of nine of the paper that Mr. Dillon handed us, on the bottom, the line 380-000-01, miscellaneous revenue. I see that we're going to bring in $109,000 this year, but we're only, we're only saying that next year we'll probably bring in $35,000. But there's another $80,000, $85,000 right there. What would constitute miscellaneous revenue, that it would be $109 this year and only $35 next year?
The main reason that is through the efforts of Merrell Winslow, and staying on Angie, et cetera, and the staff to fill out all the paperwork for the losses associated with the hurricane, and whatever we had there. That's why that figure was so high. If you look at back at 2010, miscellaneous revenue was only $21,000. So I think 35, you know, hopefully, you know, we won't have to go through, you know, these hurricanes and whatever we went through, these last two major events. So, again, that was just one-time revenue, and, so I don't think you can increase it anywhere near $109,000.
Right. Now, I was just looking, I was just wondering why the, because I looked back, it was in $85,000, and then, you know, $41,000. So I was just wondering what that was, that would be miscellaneous. Now, the other question, now, these are just questions, again, on the general fund tab, section, page 2 of 9, account 358, dash 010, dash 01. It's the county reimbursement, I guess is what helps pays our overtime, which they're only allotting us $40,000. Maybe the chief could help us, is that $40,000 that the county's reimbursing us, and we're spending over $100,000 in overtime. How much of that overtime would constitute, you know, county money in the past? So were we always getting $40,000, and our overtime would be $100-something thousand?
Probably a little bit more, $40,000, $40,000, $50,000. All that money would be reimbursed, but of that $100,000 in overtime, a lot of it would be comp time, people would take time off in lieu of getting paid. So Angie has those figures in a different location.
Is your mic working, or is it blinking green?
Let me see what else, description, 286. On page 3 of 9, also in the general fund, there is, let's see, 400, line 400, dash 100, dash 01, of just total expenditures. It has administration personnel, $229,071. Who would, who does this administration personnel include, like disposition, not, not the actual name?
It's the manager, the finance officer, part of the clerks out front. That's what that consists of.
Okay, because I see that we're gonna have a...
The administrative assistant is in there, but part-time. We have a part-time.
Okay, because I see we're gonna have some savings there for next year.
Well, we didn't plan on hiring.
We're losing Maria Fields.
Right, okay.
Maria, you know, we talked about that when you were there in negotiations.
Right, so we're losing Maria, but that'll be kind of like if we brought up like a person that does half of the work or something, replacing that. Page 8 of 9, general funds still. Line 430, dash 100, oh 1. And we talk about the street highway salaries. We're going from $400,000 to $377,000, or from $400,377 to $300,000. So we're, we're saving $100,000 there.
You're talking about from the end of 2012?
From the act, yeah. Yeah, that's what I mean, so.
It's only 2012.
Talking about from 2012. Yeah, from 2012, right? Because that's when we're gonna be losing. That was the end of 2012, so we're losing down to workers from there, right? So I guess that would just be the cost of their salary, it'd be probably a little bit more than their salary that they're losing, right? Because it's, how much are they making?
Overtime.
There's no real room there.
That's why we changed a lot of them today, Tony. If you, so we tried to say, okay, we're not gonna replace anybody on the street and highway.
I mean, does that $300,000 include us replacing somebody?
No.
Okay. And then, I'm looking on, on the same page, line 486, triple 0, dash 01. It says municipal insurance. We're going from $132,000 to $171,000.
I think it's an estimate that Angie put in, and Mr. Dillon, based on our rates going up over the issues we were dealing with.
Okay, so if we have, so that's still an estimate, or did we get any?
It's an estimate.
That's an estimate.
Is that a fair estimate, or do we, like a low estimate, a high estimate, or?
I think that's fair.
Okay. So, I mean, here's another thing that we talk about. So this is another idea, where that situation that you're talking about costs us money. This is all I have for right now.
Well, since you're on, you've been on, do you have any suggestions on how you want to cut this budget?
Well, here's the thing about it. I mean, I thought about this since we had our last meeting, and, and the thing about it is, like, when you talk about costing the budget, I mean, doing things to, to help the budget, or to have answers or solutions to the budget, like, to me, it's, it's not, it's not something that happens miraculously in November when we get the budget. I mean, this is something I think that we should have been doing, right? Which is, you know, anytime that there's big-ticket items throughout the year, these are the times that we should be reforecasting, looking at our budget on a month-to-month basis. And I asked Mr. Dillon at our last meeting, if we could get those updated, I don't wanna call them squares, but our updated interest from our advisor on that $24 million, so we can have a month-to-month look at how much money that we are bringing in interest. So that way, when we have big-ticket items, that we're able to say, listen, we're not making any money, you know, in the last month or the last couple of months, to, you know, to go, to go forward with buying big-ticket items. So to me, the budget issue is not something that we're gonna have this magic wand in November, we're gonna be able to come up with ideas. This is something that we should be doing, and we should have been doing all the way through. And I think the fundamental issue, the difference that we have, Mr. De Giuseppe, is that, and you made it clear last week, and I think, you know, our difference is, you're, you think that the borough, the residents of the borough are okay with a tax increase as long as they're getting the services that they're getting, and they would be okay with it, because the services that we're getting, they are good. They are great. But I'm not under, you know, I don't have the same school of thought when it comes to that. I don't think that the people are okay with it. So to me, if I were to say, this is what I would have done in the meantime, and I don't mean to go backwards, but these are the things that were happening in the past year that could have made a difference, and we could have saved, we could have saved a ton of money. Like, I'm gonna say we could have saved, looking at these numbers that I wrote down, we could have saved a million dollars.
On what?
I'm gonna, I'll, well, over a million dollars. The first thing is, if we would have just spent, now, I know you get upset, and, and people talk about, that garage that we built, if we would have just spent the money that we got in grants, a million and a half or 1.6, it would have been great. But we wound up spending over $3 million. So to think that that doesn't cost the taxpayer, it does.
That borough garage did not cost the taxpayers anything. And it wasn't $3 million that was spent on. If you want me to go get the board to show you where the money came from to pay for it, we will.
Well, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I looked at it, and I'm gonna guarantee, I'm gonna guarantee that the borough residents are paying for that garage. We did not, how much did the borough...
But is that productive now to try to, is that product, but we're here...
It is productive, because this is why, and I'll, and I'll tell you, Mr. Trinell, this is why it's productive, is because when we're talking about a budget, it's just like, I, I look at the borough just like I do my house. So I'm gonna spend, or I wanna, I wanna spend the people's money the way I would spend my money. And I don't think that we do that. And I have to do it month by month to make sure I could pay my bills.
But you paid the mortgage last year.
I gotta reforecast, wait a second, I gotta reforecast, I gotta keep checking my numbers month by month. So I don't make big expenditures in my house that I can't do it. I don't wait till the end of the year to make those, those, you know, those purchases or the things that I have to cut back on. I know every month, and I think that's the purpose of it. It's not to bring back and rehash what happened, no. It's the idea, looking forward. We have to do this on an ongoing basis.
And I think we do that going forward.
Not a year, wait a minute, Ms. Trinell, when I'm finished, please, Ms. Trinell, Ms. Trinell, when I'm finished, Ms. Trinell, when I'm finished, I would love for you to have the floor, but right now, I wanna, I wanna stay on, on my thought here.
Okay.
So, so that borough, and we could go into numbers later, Ralph, if you want, but 100% I believe that that borough garage is costing us the taxpayers' money. Absolutely. All right? The second thing is, we shouldn't have bought a new backhoe for $87,000, guys, especially when we had one that we could have used, and it was in working condition, that we sold for $10,000 to the sewer people, sewer plant. We bought a new police car for $35,000. We got a new brine machine for $25,000. We put new furniture at the garage for $20,000. We extended the roof for the new gas tanks, cost us about $35,000. We also, I mean, we increased the size of the lettering. We increased the size of the lettering on the borough garage, so they could be seen a lot better. The borough garage, we spent $4,000 on that. We spent $25,000 for do-up. So all these things, and then on top of that, if you, that's not even included, that's 1.76706, $500,000, so million, 706,500. And if that 1.5 million is a little high, let's say it cost the borough taxpayers a million dollars. We're still talking over a million dollars in just that. And now, we have, the last thing, is we had a lawsuit that we just paid an officer $440,000, which, with my understanding, reading an article in Levittown now...
That sucks.
Could have been, ready? That could have been, now, listen. Now, this is true, now, you guys need to listen.
Journalism...
That, that, the, the council who represented that said that didn't have to cost the borough a dollar. They had a meeting, and they said that the officer doesn't want a dollar. All he wants to do is to be left alone and not harassed while he wants to do the right thing. Is this true? Is this true? Never?
Should the chief answer? Should the mayor answer? I don't know.
Whoever was at the meeting. Mr. Salerno, were you at the meeting? Did this happen?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
I was at that meeting. I read the article. It's uncategorically not true that that happened. Now, you wanna go tit-for-tat?
Yes.
Why don't you bring the attorney in, and we'll talk about it?
Okay, that's fair enough.
They wanna make these allegations, they were not true. I was at the meeting, the chief was at the meeting.
Well, that is fair. I appreciate that. So it still stands.
If I could just interject one thing about, I mean, the garage, you're going through expenses, and, and I think we all need to look next year at, at our spending. But these are one-time spending measures that don't affect next year's deficit. So in the sense of what, what it is that you're talking about, what we're spending on, we're talking about the deficit for next year. This, this isn't what we're talking about here. You're talking about last year, and we're talking about this year coming forward. We have a projected deficit. It's not those one-time expenditures that add to that projected deficit.
And if I could just, are you done, Tony? Because I...
Yes, let me just, I'm gonna, Greg...
My God.
I mean, you're, you're a history teacher, so you know better than anybody. If, if you don't know your history, right?
Right.
You're not gonna know your future. So the history is, we spent all this money, now, all these things were brought up, I brought all these things up, that we should look into them before we did it. And everybody, not everybody else, but the majority of council felt, it was okay, we had the money, let's do it, let's do it. This is a savings that goes into the next year, right? This is what happened. So when we go into next year, these are the things that we have to address. I don't want us to forget about them. Now, there's nothing, and I agree, there's nothing that we could do about it right now. We're talking about next year, but if we don't learn from what we did last year, we're gonna do the same thing next year.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm, I mean, I, I think you think some of us are blowing hot air when we say we want to know what you want to do about next year.
Well, here's the difference, and this is why I disagree. And, and the president made it very clear. When we talk about, when we, when we talk about doing things on the budget, right, I understand that I'm not part of the majority. And believe me, I understand that.
Always with the majority.
And I'll tell you why. And here's the reason.
Tell you why.
When Mr., when Mr. De Giuseppe talks about, he, he sat with Mr. Pezz, he sat with Ms. Trinell, he sat with the Solicitor, he sat, and they came up with a bunch of ideas. So when you expect me to come up with some miraculous ideas, how we could make the budget so we could pass the budget, right, I'm not part of it. This is what I believe passes a budget. Every year, you going through things that you do not necessarily need to make sure you have a balanced budget.
Okay, but maybe you could come up with ideas for what we need to do for next year. This is already done, there's nothing we can do. I mean...
Can I say something?
We can't argue with you anyway, because you know it all. I mean, this is something, we definitely spent tax dollars on the garage, when we go over and over and over saying we didn't. So I mean, we need to, we need to figure out what we're gonna do right now, tonight, for the future.
Let me just say something. First of all, I disagree with a lot of what you said, but I'm not gonna... First of all, I disagree with a lot of what you said, but I'm not going to sit here and debate every item. First of all, if you want to get into the Borough Garage. This council, but President of this council did not vote on it by himself, it was voted on unanimously by the council that is sitting here. I don't think anybody objected about cleaning it, I don't know if Mr. Lutz was here, and if he was, he probably voted against it. But anything, if not, I know there are seven members of this council voted on every expenditure that had to do with that Borough Garage, from furniture to everything that took place. Cleaning up the sites, and no matter what happened at the garage, and like Greg and Betty said, and Rain, this has nothing to do with the Borough Garage. As far as being on top of numbers as a councilman, it is your duty, you get a report every quarter from the financial people in your package that shows you the numbers. If you don't understand the numbers, it's very simple to pick up a phone, come in after school and ask Mr. Dillon or Angie, could you explain how we're doing with the budget? We get financial reports every month in our packet, it's, there's transparency for every councilman here. You see every bill that's paid, you see every check that's written. If there's questions on that, and you feel things aren't going good, as a councilman, you have every right to bring it up and say, I don't think we should do this because things don't look good. The problem with this entire budget isn't, has no bearing on spending over government, building a Borough Garage, or fixing this building. Comes down to one item, the interest on the $24 million is generating 1%. It's, you had people here from our finance that talked about this, down on those 450-some Borough municipalities that they deal with, we're not the only person, we're the only township or Borough that's dealing with this crisis right now. So if the interest rates were 2%, 2.5%, we'd be sitting here with no problems and moving forward. And do, I am definitely not in favor of any tax increase, but I have an obligation, and so do you and every member of this council, to balance a budget by December 31st so we don't shut the Borough Government down, where we cannot operate. So we either all need to agree on a plan, or we all need to disagree on a plan and move forward. But there's no blame to put on somebody about lawsuits, about anything else, their projections, and things happen throughout the year.
And if we had a surplus in 2013, it clearly is not because of spending, we have a surplus right now.
And if I could, if I could just say, you know, before we move on with our discussions about proposals as to what we do, you know, I would like to say that I think we were all, everyone in this room, taken aback by what those interest rates were and what they returned us. And, you know, I am not a financial guy, and I know these guys were here and I know they updated us, but I do think we need to evaluate their performance a little bit, you know, I do think we need to look at what our advisors did this year, and just decide, you know, maybe just unofficial probation, because I just, I don't feel like it performed, and I know no one performed. But if we're paying someone to manage our portfolio.
I think they come in, did they come in twice a year?
They'll come in as often as you want.
They'll come in monthly.
Right, and what I was going to say, maybe just to keep them on their toes.
But don't forget, when we talked to them Thursday night.
Yeah.
They even said that they missed the mark.
Right.
And they said they missed the mark because of what we're allowed to invest in.
Right.
And, I mean, as of today, we were on the phone with them to see if they think anything could get any better.
I would like to see them come in once every three months, and we do get that stuff in our packet, and we look at it, but I want them to come in once every three months, just so that they know, in our opinion, you didn't perform last year, and it really affected us. And you can give us a lot of reasons why, but, you know, in this world, you perform or we get someone else.
Right.
And I think it's important that, obviously, at this point in time, it's probably not in our interest to make a move, but I do think that they need to come in once every three months, tell us how we're doing, and just let us know, and let the public know how we're doing, and for us to, you know, grill them a little bit, and just let them know that we're here and we're monitoring closely what you're doing, so that we're not right back in this situation next year.
I think that's a great idea, Greg.
And I guess the people at home don't.
You're on the roll, keep going.
Council President is working here, but, and then the last thing that I would, that I would like to say is, it's to reiterate a little bit about what Councilman De Giuseppe said, and that is, no one, no one wants to raise taxes. It is not something that we want, and I'm hoping, I'm still hoping that we don't have to. But I think we do, we have a responsibility as councilpeople. If you're not going to vote for a budget, then we want to hear what you want to do. And then that is a responsibility that I feel like all of us up here have. We want to know the alternatives. It's a point of frustration that I get in any realm of politics, you know, I watch people beating up, whether it be healthcare or any other thing, you don't like it, fine, but what is the alternative? What is your proposal? What's your plan? I want to know. And I'm all ears. And on top of that, you know, it's been kind of this holy grail that we don't touch, and I'm going to throw it out there, and it might not be that popular, but when we have $24 million sitting in a fund that is returning us only 1%, and, you know, aggressive estimates say it may return us a little bit more than that, are we doing our taxpayers a service when we're not generating any money, and then we're saying to them, we need to raise your taxes? Are we doing them a service by not tapping into that at this point, you know, one time only if could be, but at this point in time, tapping into that money, saving them money when we know it's not returning us any money anyway? It's something, you know, when we talk about thinking outside the box, it's not something that's ideal, but I wonder if we owe our taxpayers at least to explore that idea.
And just to go on record, so everybody knows, this gets put in our packet quarterly, Tony. You get this, right? Do you want to say it?
No, I know what it is.
Okay, so, I mean, I want you to know that you do get this, and you can review it.
No, Mr. De Giuseppe.
Get off the side, Doug.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Go ahead.
I just want to, of course, I see the packet and.
Well, I just, I want you to say that.
I know, I understand.
I don't want you to say it, and you don't know what's going on.
I understand, Mr. De Giuseppe.
Can you be slow a little bit, Tony?
What do you mean, what am I doing? I'm trying to work with you.
I don't know if you think that I'm seven, but when I hear shh.
You're screaming.
No, no, I'm talking, it's all I talk.
Oh, okay, I talk like this.
I do, so.
Talking like this.
What I'm saying, Ms. Trenell, let me know when you're finished.
Come on, Tony, let's go.
I'm just waiting, Ms. Trenell, she's the Vice President, I want to let her speak.
Let's do what we have to do, what we came here to do, let's do something about this budget, because I mean.
Maybe Ms. Trenell, are you playing Tetris? Maybe something on there that you can help us with.
Oh, stop, come on, Tony.
All right, but what I was saying was, of course, I look at the packet, but, and like I told Mr. Dillon, is that if we can have a monthly update on how our fund is progressing, so, I think that that is going to, you know, be beneficial for us as council members to, you know, as us as council members, to be able to have a better idea, better understanding of the money that's available and what we should be buying, so.
Well, you said you're not a baby, you just told Mrs. Trenell. So you're a grown man.
I said I wasn't seven, I said I wasn't a baby.
Okay, you're not, you're a grown man, sitting here for three budgets now. So it's your opportunity as a councilman to understand the budget, and if you don't understand it, you couldn't ask me tomorrow to do you a favor and go teach a history class in your school, I'd be totally lost. So I don't expect you to know everything, but I expect to hold an intelligent conversation with you where, on a budget, if you don't know anything, then come in and speak to the Borough Manager, or the Finance Director, and get your questions answered. You don't try to come here in November, when you had all year to follow this budget and follow any numbers you want, to come and act like you've been kept in the dark and you don't know anything. And the reason we met on Friday, you think we wanted to meet on Friday? We met on Friday to try to help arrest the council out, so that we could present something tonight and make it easier for anybody. I thought we took time out of our day and night to meet, and then Angie came in Saturday, and we met for six hours today to trim over $200,000 off the budget. We didn't have to do that, we could have sat here tonight and went line by line and see what everybody had to say. So we have a budget down to $616,000, and I'm asking for suggestions, intelligent statements on how to reduce this budget, not about buying a backhoe and things like that, because there's no bearing on where we are today. That didn't put us, we're, for 2013, we're $100,000 and some thousand ahead of budget. Am I, what's the number, Angie?
104.
What are we going to end up with?
104.9.
We're going to end up with $104,000, $104,000 to the good. So we did our job in 2013. We didn't make any bad moves in 2013. We had fund balances in 2013, and we're going into 14 with a projected 1% interest on our $24 million, which is $260,000. We need how to close that gap, that's the question. You want to monitor every month in 2014? We could sit here and have a budget meeting every month to make everybody happy, but what you're talking about is no bearing on the budget. So let's move forward, let's work together, and let's try to balance this budget for the taxpayers. So if nobody has any other, Pat, you have anything?
I'm just going over this.
Nobody has anything, I'll tell you what we, I end up coming up with today. I got two options for everybody to look at it, if you're happy with it, we can move forward, if you're not happy with it, I'm out of, you know, tricks here, so it's a matter of what you guys want to do. Angie, pass, or to pass A out first. Leave one on Eddie and Robin's desk, I don't know if Robin's coming back or not.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So let's go for A first. All right, A shows $616,571 that we're short, okay? We're looking at a 5 mil tax increase, which is $360,000 that we'll generate to the tax, from taxes. That's $80 a year for the average taxpayer, $667, $6.67 a month. That's what the average taxpayer's taxes will go up with a 5 mil increase to the budget. Then it leaves this. Betty, let me go through this real quickly, Robin's seen this tonight. 5 mil increase, this is option A, I'm going to pass out B in a minute, generates $360,000 in taxes, which is $6.67 a month. Then we transfer from the refuse and the street lighting, $155,000, brings the balance that we're short to 101,571. Now, how do we make up the 101,571? Increased projected interest income or other revenues, taxes, transfer taxes, building permits, et cetera. So you would have to still look for 101. I say what we do is we, if we can get a half a percent more, not 1%, just a half a percent more, generates $125,000 in our interest. So my recommendation is, we have a lot going for us, and once the year ends, come February, March, when you finally close the books, there may be extra money in some of the accounts, there may be some of the accounts that are not as good. But I think this is one way to balance the budget with a 5 mil increase, and you're raising taxes $80 a year for the average taxpayers, which is about $6.67 a month. So I don't know how anybody feels with that option.
There hasn't been a tax increase in Bristol Borough from this council in, I think, six or seven years. So I have no problem with that as one option. Here's option B coming out.
Okay, option B basically says that we had a safe deficit of 616,571, we would amend the ordinance on the investment to permit borrowing from the principal, anticipating the interest rates increasing in 14. If they didn't increase in 14, you would still take what you need to take, and in 15, let's say we took out $360,000 and we took another $360 out again, if things didn't go good. And when interest rates go up, and there's nobody in this country or council could say, you could run a country on 1% interest rates. Interest rates have to go up eventually, so if you made more than you're supposed to make, you don't take that money, you replenish the money that you took, and then that will start generating. So that's showing you the 360, that's no tax increase. Then the same thing, transferring the $155,000, and depending on 101,571 coming in from interest or other projections. Now, if that 101 changes, that would have to come out of the 360, which would end up being 461. But there's no tax increase in that scenario. So there are my two options that we worked on, I worked on, and like I said, it was going back and forth all day today. I think they're legitimate, I think they're not hurting anyone in this town, but again, I think until we can agree on this unanimously, I'm not in favor of anything until this council can agree together on it. Mr. Devine.
Well, I'm going to tell you right now, we're going to be here a long time because it's never going to be unanimous, because.
But what is your suggestion?
A is a tax increase, and I'm not going to vote for a tax increase, and B is to pull money out of the principal of the $24 million, which I will never do until it's a vote for everybody in the town, it's their money, for them to say, it's okay for you to touch that principal.
Okay, then why don't you start working on a solution?
Here's the thing about, like, we, this is the discussion that we always have. You do not need me.
Oh, yeah.
Right? You do not need me to vote to have 100% unanimous on the budget. Like, you always say, you have your five or whatever that you need.
I never say that, though.
You always do. So you have your four people that you want to have, and that's what you do, you don't worry about, you don't have to worry about what I do, because I, the idea that I have are, that you call, you know, not good ideas, these are ideas, these are, to me, these are common sense ideas. Don't spend what you don't have.
Okay.
That's it.
We didn't. In 2013.
Of course you didn't.
We exceeded $100,000 and profit per year.
Just, I'm sorry, Mr. President, just, just as you said to me, you look at those reports, right? Do you look at them every month?
I do.
All right, well, you look at them every month, so as the President, you should come back and tell us, listen, we only made $5,300 on our investment this month. We're not going to get that backup, let's hold off on that backup, until we see, you know, let's give a couple months, maybe it'll fix itself, and then we can reforecast it. Did you ever do that for us?
Why is it my responsibility?
I'm just saying.
Why isn't it your responsibility to bring it to our attention?
Because you're the President, and you, you know, you control the majority of council, that's why.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I presented my two options, I don't know if anybody else has a way to cut into it, and like Mr. Devine said, he's never voting for either one of them options. So as far as I'm concerned, we're here until December 31st, every day until we can balance this budget.
And what would happen on December 31st if we don't have a budget?
We shut down.
We shut down like the government did.
Right. And I am prepared, and I'm going on record right now, prepared to say, unless we can all agree on a budget, I am voting with Mr. Devine.
And it doesn't have to be your way, all we have to do is all agree on some solution to the problem.
So I'm supporting you from tonight on.
I appreciate that, Mr. President.
For you to balance this budget, because I tried everything.
Maybe we're going to turn the corner this year, me and you.
Yep, well, come up with a solution.
We ain't moving forward, that's for sure.
Because we're not going anywhere from here on in.
Hey, listen, I love sweepovers.
That's good.
Oh, I'm not staying here all night, I'll...
Can I throw something out there on the table?
They can do what they want, I'm done.
As, as we're talking, just something to consider and, you know, we have two, two options here. One involves a five mil increase and the other involves tapping into that 24 million. My concern with either is that we may be in a, in a similar position next year for the people to have to deal with it all over again. So my point is, as I already went on record saying, I, I do think we should consider tapping into a little bit of that money, whatever it takes to, to, to make ends meet. I'm wondering if we, we can meet in the middle and have a 2.5 mil tax increase, where that would cause the average taxpayer three dollars and 33 cents a month and then get the other half of that from, from the, from that fund. Because as we all know, if we tap into that fund once, that's a one-time thing. And that, 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 that does not necessarily solve our problem for next year. Those two nan-mils may help in the future. And it's a lot less...
Let's do it this way, let me just call everybody to make it easier. The two options are on the table, like Greg said, a combination of the two options. Would you be in favor of it, yes or no? Tony?
No.
Pat?
No.
Greg?
Yes.
All right.
I'd be in favor of a combination.
I'd be in favor of a combination. I, I think it's so immature to sit up here and, and act like, no, I'm not gonna do this, no, I'm not gonna do that. It's your responsibility. And, and where are all the taxpayers?
Well, everybody wants to go around town saying, I didn't vote to raise the taxes.
You know? Ralph, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this...
I got the floor. Patty?
Greg, with Greg, the half and half.
Yes.
I'm in favor, any combination, but if Mr. Devine doesn't vote for it, I'm not voting for it. Let me ask the public, so you have anything you wanna say? Go ahead.
John Rusin, Devine Gilligan. First of all, I don't know if I'm used or aware of it, but our tax billage here in Bristol Borough, the 49, 48, 9 mils, okay? Other than Warrensville Borough, that's a 40 mils, so we're already a most, kind of, higher than them. Other than Warrensville Borough, everybody else is more than half of, of what we're at. They're only at 28, 20, the next third, the third highest is Bristol Township, 23 mils. Now we're already at 49 mils and you just wanna raise it five more mils, it doesn't make sense to me. The town looks great, but we gotta cut.
What is your suggestion?
Cut services.
Pat, tell me what?
You know, I'm a lot of gals, I'm not the only one.
I mean, you got, you, you just read numbers, so apparently you're on top...
Cut all over town, all over town, it's ceased. We can't afford it, Ralph, I don't drive Cadillac, we can't, I'm, I'm...
So you're saying if there's a sewer break and the sewer's running up out of a manhole, let it stay till the next day? Or if there's a snowstorm...
How many times have I been flipped? How many times have you gotten hit, Ralph?
A lot.
I, I don't say it.
So if there's a snowstorm, you're saying after 3:30, let it snow till morning?
Let it snow till morning, absolutely.
You know, what about the people who have to go to work?
Absolutely, right. We can't, you know what?
That when you can't get out of your dryware, get through town, and somebody gets hurt or people need to go to work in the morning...
You know what, how's the other towns doing, Ralph? You're too near on horn about how you got a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar surplus at the end of this year. How does the other towns do it?
They have a lot more people.
And, and, and Bristol Township just cut, John, Bristol Township just cut their trash pickup to once a week. Talk about cut services?
A nightmare.
Once a week, they get their trash pickup. But that's how you cut services.
And that's been, and that's been a nightmare.
So that's what it has to be, that's what it has to be.
I'm not sure that every resident of Bristol Borough wouldn't be willing to pay either 40 or 80 dollars a year.
How are we, how are we at number one in the milling rate alternate county by a whole bunch, by one of the...
I think what I said, we're a small municipality, John, Bristol Township is a large municipality.
You think Eaglesville is?
You think Bristol Township or Eaglesville has a 6 million, 7 million dollar ice skating rink? That they're paying a debt service on, 600?
What's the milling rate that we have to pay that year?
8.5 mils.
Okay, just going, all right.
And Bristol Township, and Bristol Township has an earned income tax. Factor that in too, and factor the ice rink in.
I'm just saying that we have to do something. We just can't people on raising the bar as far as taxes.
Well, when did we raise taxes last? You act like this...
In ten years, my taxes double here. I moved the kid, I moved the kid, and I still get the taxes out on the internet.
School taxes.
My tax bills double.
School taxes.
School taxes more than double.
County taxes, right. That's not us.
They're never gonna raise taxes either on you.
Oh, yes, they are. You know what, one thing I'm not, I mean, that's all I'm saying. You know what, Ralph, the town looks great, I have to say that. And it, it does look nice, but what can we afford? We can't afford it. We can't afford to do what we're willing to do. That's all I gotta say.
Any other comments?
Just one, real quick. The surplus that was put in, uh, 104,900 dollars. Can we put that into this budget?
It is in the budget.
Oh, it is? You already put that in? Went to 222, 429, and that's where you get the three, that's where you get it?
Twenty-five down to six on.
Gotcha.
Matter of fact, I'm glad you brought the budget up again because you said you met with Bobby about the budget. Did you guys ever, three of you get a chance to talk yet, or? All right, on the police budget, there's two budgets, Pat. One that, yeah, in our budget, under police department.
So that's the one that we're working with.
Is it on the general fund or the...
Okay, there's two budgets. There's the budget that Mr. Dylan and Angie prepared in column one that says, proposed budget for 14. And there's a budget that Pat, Bobby, and I think Arnie all agree on for 2014. Am I correct by what I'm saying? Yes?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay. So that budget isn't in this figure.
No, it's not.
The projected bus, budget that you guys are projecting. So there's a difference of 94,681 dollars more that the three you guys are proposing versus what we're proposing.
Say it again?
Sorry, yeah.
94,681.
Okay.
If you take the, the 2,578,062 and the 2,672,733 that Pat wants to work with next year, the difference of 94,681 dollars.
How come it's this much more? What's, what's the...
They think you added a Bobby, a police officer?
Yes, we added a police officer. Kept the power squad at 20,000.
I'm sorry, speak up for, so I can hear you. I'm sorry.
We added a police officer. We kept the power squad at 20,000.
Is that a full-timer?
No, the power squad.
No, I'm talking about the police officer.
Yes, it's full-timer. Medical, now that we had nothing to do with that. The training, we wanted to raise it to 75. Proposed budget is 4,000.
Or is that it, Bobby?
What's the number?
210, 410 dash 460 dash 01.
Train.
75.
If you take notice in October, we're already over the 4,000 proposed by Mr. Dylan. And that training includes a lot of things.
So how much more is that? Another 1,500, you're saying?
Another 1,500, is that what it is? Thirty.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
The camera maintenance, actual right now is 17,009, okay? And the estimated will be 17,009. The proposed budget by the chief and I was 10,000. That's for the cameras that we have out through town. Maintenance on them. Proposed was 4,000. That was $6,000 difference. We don't have in here the DARA program, which is 30, we proposed 3,800 on the line items that the chief wrote out in the back of the budget, $10 for the officer, who would take it as comp time, so the difference probably would be half of that. What else was it, chief?
I think that, that covered the big items. Forty-four, five was the cost for the new officer.
Chief, why do we need a new officer, another officer?
We're still short the number of officers that, that we hired a few years ago. And at one time, we had a power, a power squad that worked seven at night to three in the morning. Uh, we had two officers assigned to that and that worked out pretty good. If I got at least one officer, we could start working our way back up to that, assign someone to cover a little bit of the 412, the evening shift and the, and the midnight shift.
We can't do that with what we have right now? We can't work that out?
No, we can't. Right now, we have enough officers for, we have three per squad and we work with our part-time officers to fill in.
Do you agree with that, Pat?
Um, I talked, we had a talk tonight and Bobby, myself, and Arnie had talked about, if it's not a full-timer, part-time, which cuts the way, cuts down revenue way down, it cuts the allotment of money.
We wouldn't have to pay insurance?
No.
The only thing I don't wanna do, Pat, and I think we made a commitment, is not handcuffing you from your ability to run...
No, 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 that's why I asked Pat, what he thought.
No, no, I'm saying to run the police tomorrow. So that's why I'm trying to get a number. How you run it and what you do is gonna be on you. But I just wanna make sure what budget we're gonna work with. Because I have a question in the, in your guys' budget.
Okay, which is, which is, we'll wait, so we'll wait, we can get, get the answer.
The question I have is to the chief and everybody, under clerical personnel. Item 102 dash 01 on page 5 of 9. You're showing 78.5. Are you saying you're gonna stay with one clerical person or two?
I figured that on Maria's salary plus, uh, an entry-level person as the number two secretary downstairs.
So then we're not sending somebody from up here down?
I don't know, I was just trying to...
The difference is, if you want a full-time, I don't know, I mean, I can't put Pat on the spot because he's just didn't get down there yet. But Bobby, you should be, have the answer to chief. Do you think it's a two-person job downstairs for clerical work?
Absolutely, I think.
Absolutely.
Mayor, the officers, myself, Maria downstairs, it's a two-person job.
Okay, so then you gotta add another, besides the 94,000, another 71,000 to that budget.
Well, I was, I was going with some of the discussions with the newer contracts, who you're gonna bring in.
Well, the contract is, we're trying to sell it, we got a meeting tomorrow. It's 15 dollars an hour for new employees. But that's a new employee coming in. So if you want a new girl coming in, then you gotta add that person downstairs to that payroll. If you don't want a new girl and you want the girl that's been helping you, then you gotta add 71,000 to that cost.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. President. If you go to what Mr. Porter had put in, Mr., and the mayor, Libo, it says in handwriting, Arnie and, and Mr. Mayor Bob Libo puts down secretaries, okay? He puts down 78,584.
Am I right?
Well, I'm not done yet. Then he has Maria Yezzi down with a figure, and then there's a question mark with 25,000 dollars on top of that figure. It's very close to that. So that would be a part-time. Or a person at a reduced rate.
That's what I'm trying to...
Am I right in saying that, Arnie?
Yeah, I was anticipating a full-time, another full-time secretary down there.
And that means, excuse me, Arnie, keeping the person who's currently there, correct? Is that how this works?
Maria, and then bring someone else in. I didn't know if we were gonna bring, at the time when I made this, um, budget, I didn't know if we were gonna be bringing a brand-new person at an entry level or taking someone from upstairs who would be at a higher level. So I put in...
But you went with the lower figure.
I went with the lower figure.
You went with the lower figure, but that puts us in a bind again. It's kinda like what Lorraine was just leading to, with the extra police officer.
I asked Jim if it's okay to bring up figures. For you to take, keep Maria down there. Her salary is like 74 with longevity, you gotta add everything to the, I mean, Angie, what is it, about 74?
Longevity, signing bonus, the insurance reimbursement.
All right, all right, you're like...
I just figured wages.
But I'm saying, you're at 74, so you got four grand at that number. At that number, you have 45,000 dollars left out of that 78.5. That's what I didn't understand today, what we were doing. I thought...
I only figured wages, I didn't figure benefits in addition to...
We have to figure benefits and we have to factor our budget, that's our problem.
That's what I'm saying, if you want the person that is down there now, you gotta add 71,000 to your budget to keep her. If not, you gotta bring somebody new in. And we don't have a problem either way. I'm, I'm not saying don't do what you're doing. I'm saying we need to have a number because if you add the secretary in, in the 94,000, we're 165,681 short in the police budget, which has to be added then to this 101,571. So if you add that...
You're saying that in past years, the budget, like in 2013, that 100, um, the, for clerical, the 180,000, that was wages and benefits?
Yes, wages and benefits, the longevity, short reimbursement, signing bonus, overtime.
So Angie, 101,571 and 165,681 as well.
That's a lot of money. Arnie, you look closer, that's a lot of money.
Plus what?
101,571 and 165,681.
Ralph, what's gonna be our...
267,252.
267.
232.
So that bottom number, keeping it the way with their request now got larger, goes to 267,252.
Mr. President, in the event that, uh, in a hypothetical world where, where we talk about personnel moving forward and with our budget constraint, so we are, if we budget personnel, then we are basically saying there's a position open and we're, we're gonna hire that position.
We don't have to. It's just in the budget, so if you do...
I mean, part of me wants to see, not a part of me, I, I wanna see, um, from, I don't know if it would come from the mayor, I don't know if it would come from the police chief, um, and even maybe something from Mr. Dylan that says, this is why we need this position, here's what they do. Here's what their job description is and here's why it needs to be filled. Before we vote on, I mean, I would like to throw out there the even the idea of a hiring freeze, but I also, if, if it is legitimately handcuffing the ability of either Mr. Dylan or, or the chief to operate, then I think it's something we can look into. But I, it just seems like in, in a year like this, discussing hiring new people is, is a little out of the box. I mean, I, it just seems to me like...
It's lost four people now, that's the problem, you have two public workers.
And they survive, and I think Bobby just immediately said no.
So can we get a little bit more on what no means?
No means no.
What, what, you know, the details of what, what those positions do?
You gotta work down there to realize what they do down there.
Sure.
Okay, it's, it's nice to be able to sit up here and say that maybe they don't do anything.
Who, who, who?
Because you, I'm not saying that anyway, I'm just saying.
Nobody said that.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
Uh, they have, they're entitled to vacations, which they do. They have, they're entitled to vacations, which they do. Maria, right now, is running ragged down there, because she's got to do basically everything down there. It's a two-person operation. I worked down there for 33 years, and we always had two people down there.
But I don't think that we're saying you don't get a second person.
Because we needed it. It's not like up here, where, you know, they basically, they get to go home. Sometimes our girls can't, because maybe the officer made an arrest, or they need a report done right away, that it has to be faxed up to the DA's office, and things like that. It's needed.
Okay, and I hope you weren't insinuating that that's what I was saying, but it's not.
No, 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 no.
But on top of that, I thought part of the proposal that we were throwing out there was that, in the event that we make some moves, that someone from up here would be going down there to help. So I also have to say about the same thing.
So then when you do that, you're going to be crying that you're shorthanded up here?
Sure, I mean, it's a matter of what.
I think crying is probably the word.
Well, we lost, we lost Maria up here.
Right.
And if Bridget goes downstairs, we're down two girls.
Two girls, right.
So we need to replace somebody upstairs. We can't survive with one person.
Is that crying?
But I'm saying, so we're not saying we don't want to give you the girl. All I'm saying is, I want everybody to understand that you need to add more to the budget, that's all. I don't care if you just want to add five more people. Just tell me what number we're working with. Excuse me.
Proposed budget has 14 officers.
Okay, that's including the chief.
And detectives, that do not go out on patrol. So you have 12 officers that actually do patrol work.
Who doesn't go out on patrol? I want to hear that again.
The chief and the detective.
I don't think anybody's here to, I'm just speaking for myself. How the department runs, how it has to run, what has to, it doesn't matter to us, we don't run it.
I agree.
What I'm here to find out is financial, we're here to talk about finances.
What they need.
We need to say, if that's the budget, we just increased it by 165,000. That's all I'm saying. How we get to these numbers, it's up to council.
Without cutting services.
Without cutting services.
And that's staff.
And guess what? We want to cut services? Tell me what you want to cut. I don't care, I'm here to listen to everybody. You don't want no overtime for anybody anymore? Come 3:30, everybody goes home. Take the whole thing of overtime off the table. You don't want a snowplow during the night, when people get up in the morning and there's 18 inches of snow? Then it stays. On weekends, we don't plow, we let the snow fall. And it's that simple. You know, don't matter to me.
Thank you for the recommendation.
Somebody make a suggestion.
I don't want to cut services.
I don't want to cut services.
You think people pay taxes in order to have services? And I don't think we ever spent, because we have a, you know, a plus at the end of the year.
We know why the budget is where it's at.
And I think that the two proposals of, like Lorraine said, that the combination of the two is something that I willingly go along with, to be able to balance a budget and keep us where we are today.
I mean, I look back at other boards that never raised, ever, ever. If you raise a little bit, a little bit at a time, I think it's smarter than throwing it on the law.
In your 10 years, Lorraine, we only raised taxes once.
I know you did. I know, I know you did. I'm talking about you guys.
Yeah, I mean, but that's a plus, though, that we can sit here and say that.
I'm being careful about who I'm speaking of right now.
You know what I mean? To be able to say that is a plus, with everything that we've accomplished in this town, whether people think so or not.
I agree.
Take it, five minutes.
Can we please?
Recession.
I don't know if I'm coming back, but that's good.
We're back. All right. Any suggestions or comments or?
I have a question for, I guess, for councilman soon-to-be, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sabatini, when it comes to building the budget, I want to understand where you stand in the sense of, if you're building a police budget, I know you're in a unique situation, because you're building a police budget, and you're also a councilperson that is given the duty to vote for this, for this budget itself. So I guess what I'm asking is, while you're making this proposal for the police, are you willing, what are you willing to support in order to get your budget on the table? In order to get your police budget into this budget, what are you willing to support and vote on for us to move forward?
Good question, Greg, and yes, it is a very unique situation, and more than capable handling this. Obviously, I would like to have another police officer full-time, but if not, there is the possibility of part-time without benefits, you have a police officer coming in at $35,100 at part-time. The overtime, and Mr. Dillon had-
I'm sorry, Pat, I just want to understand you. So you're looking at, can you tell me what line you're looking at, so I-
Now, this is a number I come up with from what-
Okay.
Is in the back that Mr. Porter wrote down.
Is it in these papers, the other papers?
It's in the very back of your general fund, where it's all handwritten. And it says, "Part-time officers." And that's the three officers. That's at 36 hours, I just can't, I calculated it 30.
Okay.
But I know through the years, police chief and the mayor have came to the council, and were very successful in getting part-timers when they weren't even budgetary police officers in the past.
Can you get, I just wanted to know, can you give me like the bottom line of what, with that adjusted proposal? What is the bottom line of your, Mr. Mayor's proposal compared to the proposed budget? Do you have that basic figure?
This, I'd have to readjust all these figures, because we're counting on a full-time, obviously, there's not enough. Here, I mean, even though it has part-time listed, I'm going to refer this to Mr. The Mayor right now, and I'm sure he would say exactly the same.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it.
This is on a three patrol officer with the police chief and the mayor's budget.
So Mr. Mayor, that's the second line item then, is that right?
Yes. Excuse me.
So you guys, you guys are saying that you're good with the, with the budget estimate from the projected budget for the full, not good with it, you'd prefer full-time, but recognize that that might not happen?
Correct.
And that you're just want to push the three part-timers?
Correct.
Okay. Difference of like 44,000, right?
So what are we doing, guys?
Greg, you know as well, you know, because you've been doing numbers well, you always push for as many as you can get, and you settle for what you can afford.
I'm just trying to make sure I know it. Good. So that's about, so that's about 50,000 more than what Mr. Dillon has proposed, right?
We do, uh-
42,120 dollars per officer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's at 36 hours. I will confer and get back to you and find out from the mayor and the police chief if 30 hours or 36 hours is more sensible.
Okay.
As you get that fine line there, I'm assuming, am I right, Mr. Mayor, with, when you have a part-timer, gets over 40 hours, it becomes full-time?
That's a good one.
Does that happen with the police, with the-
It hasn't happened yet, but technically, yes.
Because it can happen, it's something to protect ourselves from. But the more hours we can get them into, the better the situation. Now, if that can work, that's one thing. That's shooting from the top, because you know you want to go the most.
Yeah.
And obviously, this budget does not allow, doesn't look like it is allowing it for it. But you had asked me the question, and that's the, I think a part-timer is based on the number of 42,120 dollars per person. That's at 36 hours, and-
So are we-
Obviously, it hasn't happened in the past, as Mr. Lebo and Mr. Porter had mentioned, where they keep them out of that line, where they're not become full-time. And each officer-
You said 36 hours, right?
Yeah, at 36 hours. If you go to where Mr. Porter-
Right.
-drew up his budget and Mr. The Mayor.
Yeah, I just, one thing that comes to mind, Pat, and I'm sure, I'm sure you know it, but it's unique because it's new. When we, Pat, what is the threshold? 30 hours now, right? If you work more than 30 hours, we're required to cover their health insurance, aren't we?
That's right.
By the new healthcare law?
That's under the new Obamacare, and I'm going to, I'm going to give that message right into Mr. Dillon, whose job it is to look at every, every financial dollar spent in this town. So why don't you direct that question, Mr. Dillon?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying if we do the part-
Ask, ask Mr.-
Okay, Mr. Dillon, if we do the part-
Because he's the one in charge of this budget.
I got you.
He's the barrel manager, he's the one who's got to make this money make work.
Okay.
I don't get paid the money that he does to do this.
If we do 36 hours for part-timers, we would have to cover their health insurance, right, by the new Obamacare law?
Um, I don't-
Isn't it, if you cross that 30, if you cross 30-hour threshold, I'm pretty sure federal law is going to mandate that we have to cover their health insurance.
I think you have to have so many employees.
Right.
Jim? I think the, one of the thresholds is 50 full-time employees.
Okay.
But, you know, I think they're continuing to amend certain regulations, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what is the-
Now, I'd like to point out that monthly, you get a treasures report, and it shows, you know, what's being charged to the various departments, including the police department.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, you know, if you're saying that you want me to be in charge of-
No, 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 I said up till now, you're the one that pushes the-
Do it.
No, 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 you're not going to touch that, it's going to be myself and Mr. Porter, if I, when I become the mayor, but as now, it's up to Mr. Lebo and Mr. Porter.
Well, I was just trying to see what you're telling me you want me to do.
No, 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 no.
You don't want me to do anything then, right?
No, just do what you do.
Can I just ask, what is the difference between the 2013 budget, police budget, financially, and the 2014 budget overall? What's the difference?
94,000.
94,681. Add in a full-time secretary, the 165,681.
And that's over what we did last year?
Right.
Okay.
That's because, on the, excuse me, Mr. President, that's because we had the, we had lost Patty Cavnish, who put in a lot of good years here, and we thank her for that service. And the mayor and Mr. Porter, after asking them a question tonight, said that there's no way that one person can handle the load that's downstairs. Am I right in saying that, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Porter?
That's correct.
But I'm just confused a little bit, I apologize. But if we had two people in 2013, then I don't understand-
Well, the budget was lowered from 100 and something, that's why it came to my attention today, when I'm looking at it, saying-
So what they budgeted for wouldn't have covered last year's employees to employees, is that right? Is that right, Chief Porter?
We spent-
Correct, because-
Okay, so the problem is, go ahead.
Correct, correct, because the second employee was based on an entry-level person coming in, and it did not include benefits, in my computation.
We spent 108,000 for two secretaries.
In 2013, and we budgeted-
And when I looked at it today, and it went to 78.5, and I was wondering why we went from 108, it should have went up, because salaries go up.
But I think that's an error anyway, only because you didn't know at the time whether we were hiring a full-timer or a part-timer, correct?
No, they put in, that's what I was getting at tonight, they said they need full-time. I'm not disagreeing that they don't need full-time.
But they budgeted for part-time.
I guessed at the full-time, new employees' full-time rate, I anticipated what it may possibly be, and I did not include the benefits. That's why the number's so low.
And again, we're still-
There's nothing wrong with that, Arnie, I'm not criticizing you or anything. What I'm saying is, for us to balance a budget, we just need to know what the number is.
Real number.
We can't use the 94,000 because it's not accurate. So if we're going to hire somebody full-time from up here to bring down, you've got to get the 165,681. If we're going to bring somebody off the street at a different rate and train them to work down there at a different rate, then you're probably going to be, maybe another 30, so you'll be at maybe 124 instead of 165.
And let me ask you one more question. Can, will the union, because we're negotiating, will the union allow us to hire somebody part-time to cover a full-time position?
No, not part-time. We either got to bring people up here at the new rate and charge them to the general fund, or leave what we have up here and bring new people downstairs. That's all, it's just a matter of whether, it's all comes out of the same pot.
I know, I just know that the union, that we had disagreements about whether we could hire a part-time upstairs, so union rules are going to prevail, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if the calculations are roughly correct, my calculations, so what, what Mr. Lebo is asking for, um-
I don't want to interrupt you, but I have to say one more thing before you make any. Herbie's been sitting there for three budget meetings. He hand out papers with the, we haven't even-
Don't have it.
I don't even know if you're looking for more money, you're not looking for money.
My, well, the fire department's always looking for money. The papers that I put together basically were just some notes on how, over the past 20 to 30 years, the fire department has been funded. Basically, there hasn't been an increase in the Borough Fire Surface Allotment for the past 20 years. In looking at the information, I also found out something interesting, that was that in 1982, the Borough paid approximately $120,000 for fire protection. At that time, they had paid men, but the way I look at it is, they paid $120,000 for fire protection. In 2012, the Borough paid $98,000 for fire protection. So in a period of 30 years, they are now actually paying $22,500 less for fire protection. And I've got some charts there, the first one shows that, that difference in the 30-year period. And I'll go through these real quick. In comparison to the police department, and I understand they have salaries and all, but in 1997, the police budget was about, it was 15.15 million dollars. 2012, it was a little under two and a half. The fire, so the police budget went up 85 percent, the allotment to the fire companies went up zero. In looking at the money, if you had stayed with the paid men, the cost today probably would be about $309,000 a year with the paid firemen, and it's, for the fire companies, it stayed at 82,500. The next chart, inflation-based volunteer fire company distribution, that allotment just based on inflation should be up around $130,000, it's at 82,500. And then I have the shrinking value of the dollar. 20 years ago, 16,500, $500 is now worth, that's the one with the little money, is now worth a little, around $9,000. So, and again, if anybody that's sitting in this room could operate on your 1995 salaries or run your business on your 1995 funding, that's what we've asked the fire companies to do. Couple things else, there's pie charts here. We went through an ISO survey, and the fire companies worked very hard to improve our rating from a five to a four. On that first chart, there, in the United States, there are only 5% of the fire departments with a better rating than what we have. In a state of Pennsylvania, there's only 1% of the fire departments that have a better rating than what we have. So, and this is, this is what the fire companies have worked very hard to do. A couple other quick notes, 2012, there were 573 responses in- in Bristol Borough by the fire department. They responded to a total of nine hundred and twelve calls. Three hundred and twenty-one fire company responses were for medical emergencies. Two hundred of the fourteen hundred medical emergencies in Bristol Borough get a fire truck because Bucks County Rescue Squad's not available to handle that call. That comes out to be fifteen percent of the medical emergencies that occur in town get a fire truck to respond, because that ambulance is coming from Ben Salem, or Levittown, or Pendel. The fire departments put in almost six hundred CO alarms and eight hundred smoke alarms for free. We raise approximately seventy to eighty percent of our operating budget. So in that whole time, we haven't really diminished any services. It's just meant that the volunteer firefighters have had to go out and work harder to main, to get money to maintain their equipment. There's only two Borough Fire companies that solicit money from businesses or residents. We don't bill. We can't bill for our services. Insurance companies don't reimburse fire companies for their services at fires and emergencies. Since nineteen ninety, when we had paid men, we probably saved the Borough somewhere around three and a half million dollars in salaries by taking on all volunteer services. I already mentioned the ISO survey, and generally, the money that we raised gets invested back into the equipment to make sure that we can provide the citizens with the very best service. We had passed, in a voter referendum that was approved by the voters, a five-mil fire tax. And actually, in nineteen nineties, the beginning of the nineteen nineties, when a mil was sixteen thousand dollars, the Borough did tax the residents at five mils. When it was reassessed, the Borough dropped the fire, actually cut the fire tax down to where it would generate ninety thousand dollars, so that if we had the fire tax today at five mils, the fire companies would be in good shape. We're also looking at, the Borough's had to take on the workers' compensation insurance because of the cancer presumption law. The, did it, dropped the fire companies, and now we're under the state workers' comp at an additional cost to the Borough. We're also looking at, in the next seven years, to have to pay for all of those radios that we had to purchase, which we've come out to about forty-two thousand dollars a year for the Borough radios for the fire department. And so I just want the Borough to be aware of the, like, and the only way where the, that the fire department is gonna get an increase is to take that fire tax back up to a higher level. And it's been at one point two five mils since the reassessment. And again, we've been basically stuck at the same amount of money now for twenty years.
Harvey, let me ask you a question. What happened to the survey that was supposed to be done to determine how many fire, all that stuff that we looked into?
The last survey was, the state cut the survey off. They didn't get full cooperation of the Borough.
Not from council?
No. In talking to the person that was conducting the survey, he said that he could not get any responses from the mayor at the time.
Well, do you think it's something that the new mayor should fast-track and start meeting maybe for the first six months to try to get this survey done?
Absolutely, yeah. The fire companies are still interested in getting that back on track.
I know it's gonna take a lot of time and effort, but I don't know. I think we need to know, I think this survey's very important that it gets done in town. I know Merle's somebody that's been pushing the survey.
I mean, the firemen in this town and the fire companies are committed to providing the very best service they can for the Borough, but, you know, we can't take another twenty years to be stuck at the same funding support from the Borough that we've been.
Bobby, do you go to every fire board meeting?
Recently, no. Working for the school district.
I mean, a major part of them?
Oh, yes. Just recently, the last couple, maybe four or five months, I haven't...
Sure.
Okay. I just want the council to be aware that, you know, we would, clearly, we would be looking...
But what are you asking for mileage-wise for an increase?
Uh...
I didn't read on the...
You wanted to, I would say, my position would be to go back to the five mils. I know that's a lot, but I've listened to council people sit here and say that, you know, they could do five mils to maintain services and everything, and that five mils could give the fire companies a significant increase. That five mils could cover, I believe it could cover the workers' compensation costs. It could cover the radio costs. It could cover, it could cover all of the fire department budget, and whatever comes out of the general fund could be recouped back into the general fund.
Harvey, so you want us to go from one point seven five mils to five?
It's one point two five.
But it's supposed to be increased.
Oh, I haven't seen the budget. Was it increased in the budget?
There's an increase for...
That's for the workers' compensation.
Very small, very small.
But again, well, there's one point two five. You want us to go from that to five mils?
I'm, my, when I look at it, I would say it would be easier to do it one time and be done with it than to do, you know, right now, we're gonna, we're gonna raise it a half a mil, but there's really not a specific benefit to the operating cost of the fire companies. We're gonna, we're gonna raise it a half a mil to pay for workers' compensation costs, which up until this year, I don't believe came out of the fire tax at all.
Herb, I'm listening to you. I'm listening to you all the way, but I'm asking you, so you want us to raise it to five?
Yes, I would say raise it to five mils.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
All right. Is it something like, I know it's almost nine o'clock, nobody had dinner yet, or we better come back tomorrow and be more, try to get stuff done, or where do we stand with this? How do you feel?
I'm, I re-spoke you, um...
You work on Tuesdays.
Yeah, I work on Tuesdays. I think Greg had the best scenario, and I don't know how long we're gonna keep going in circles about this, but, and all of a sudden, Mr. Devine's really quiet tonight, but, I mean, if he's not gonna participate at all, I don't know what we're gonna do.
I guess my question would be, and just for the sake of full disclosure, are we gonna, you know, Tony and Pat, I don't know where you stand, but Tony, is there gonna be anything we can do to get you to go along with the budget?
The only thing that I could tell you is this, Nettie, I will not be voting on any budget where we're raising taxes. And I will not be voting on any budget where we're taking out of the principal of the twenty-four million that we got from when we sold the water company.
So what could we cut? Have you found things in there that we can cut?
Well, I think what we talked about it, and I made it clear, I thought I made it clear, is, you know, what we've done the past year could've, we could've avoided...
We're talking about the future year, and I wanna know what we can cut in the future year.
But this is what you have to understand. The majority, right, the majority is going to make the decision. You do not need my vote to...
Tony, we're asking you for your help. Kathy, we're actually trying to work with you. We want you to help us work this out. You can make that face all you want. You spoke all...
Betty, let me help you, Betty.
But, no, 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 Tony. Regardless of the money that was spent already, that we can't change what we did already.
It's already done.
But we need to figure, we go backwards and figure this out.
I agree with you, but what I'm saying is, we have a fundamental difference on how we see things.
So you're not gonna work with us then? You're saying you're not gonna work with us then?
I'm talking to Betty. I'm talking to Betty right now.
I'm talking to you.
All right, so then this is just a waste of time, right?
I'm...
This is a waste of time.
No, he's not working with us. That's what he's saying.
Lorraine.
Spit it out. No, spit it out.
Lorraine.
Can you calm down, please?
No, I can't.
Can you, please?
No.
No, you can't?
Here's the, here's the problem.
Okay, well, wait, I was even, I mean, I understand when somebody had the floor...
Calm down, calm down. You don't make any kind of sense. How could you calm down? Make sense, Tony, make sense.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. What I was saying is, we have a fundamental difference, right?
Yeah.
The fundamental difference is this. You feel, right, and the majority feels...
Don't speak for me.
All right. You feel, and the majority feels...
There he goes again. Talk about yourself.
That you're okay.
Talk about yourself. Talk about yourself. Don't talk for me. I'm tired of you talking for me. That's all you've been doing, and I'm tired of it.
When was the latest time I talked?
All the time. You put me in a group. I'm sick of it.
Okay. Well, anyway...
Speak for yourself.
I will speak for myself. I have a fundamental difference in opinion as the majority of the council, which is, you believe that the services are, you believe that the people in this town, the residents, would be okay with a tax increase as long as we keep the services the way they are. And I agree, the services are great in this town. But the reality is, we're not...
So you wanna cut services. You're saying you wanna cut services then?
Can you, can you, can you do something about it, Council President, please?
No, I wanna know. Maybe that's what we're talking about then. Let's cut services. Come on, Tony. Let's cut services.
If you were at the last meeting, you would've heard that.
I couldn't be here.
Okay, I'm just saying...
And it's none of your business why I wasn't.
I'd say it was. All I'm saying is, if you were at the last meeting, we talked about that.
Well, I'm asking you now. What do you wanna cut? What services would you like to cut?
This is what I'd like to cut. And let's go back.
I would like to.
Do you have your pencil out?
Oh, you're darn right I do.
The backhoe.
It's already done.
Should we sell that now?
It's already done.
Well, the point is, I'm making is this...
No, you're not making any point.
The point is this. You don't, you don't need me. We're on two different levels. I believe that what we do service-wise, we need to cut back. We can't continue to grow and hire more people. The government that we hire and that we serve, I mean, that serves this town is too big. Simple.
All right, so the police department doesn't get a new shot. They don't get a secretary.
No secretary, Arnie.
Forget the, Harvey, sorry.
No cars. Sorry, Harvey.
These are all things that we...
Are you saying, let me, let me just clear something.
Go ahead.
Police budget right now. Are you saying, don't hire the secretary, don't hire the extra part-time cops, don't do anything that's in our proposed budget?
Because it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over what we proposed.
You're saying we're overstaffed right now.
What I'm saying is...
Go ahead.
Without a doubt, we have too many people on our payrolls.
Okay, well, who do you wanna cut?
Who, do I wanna cut?
Yeah.
I'll have to go and talk about it. We'd have to do that as a group, don't we?
You don't have to give names. You have positions.
I just thought it'd be a group. I figured that would come together.
And you know, I honestly, Tony, real quick, I am asking for the professional courtesy to tell us if you're, if we can actually meet in the middle. Because if the answer's no, then I'd rather not sit here and...
Wait, wait, wait. This is what I don't understand with all, with everybody. I don't understand with everybody. I told you from the beginning, right? I will not support, I brought up a bunch of different ideas, and the ideas that I brought up...
You didn't bring anything up to balance the budget.
We must sell our backhoes.
Because the, because what you guys are doing, you're missing the point of balancing a budget isn't something that you do in November. Balancing the budget is what we should've been doing all the way through.
Let me just say...
We shouldn't have been buying a backhoe. We shouldn't have been buying a brier. We shouldn't have been buying a new cop car.
Already done. It's great.
Right, but you understand, it's already done, but that's the problem.
That's not the reason we didn't, we're not able to pass through it. You can't understand that.
No, 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 listen. I do understand it. Betty, Betty, I do understand it.
No, you don't.
Now, watch, right? Betty.
Oh, you don't.
Betty, if we go month to month, if we go month to month...
Tony, let's do what we have to do now. Let's do what we have to do now.
Because you're missing the point. The point is that you...
You don't wanna work with us.
Here's the problem, Tony. You said to Mr. President about the issue of the budgets and doubt things should've been done.
Mm-hmm.
And you bring up history. You sat on the school board. You took nine hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand dollars out of a fund balance to balance the budget.
Yeah, number one, I wasn't even part of that. I wasn't even part of the budget anyway, but...
You voted on it. I'll pull the records if you want. You wanna talk about the states...
If you're gonna pull the record, pull the record from your eyes.
I got the floor the way you had the floor, and I sat here and listened to you.
Did you? Because you had a lot of other people talking about it.
I sat here and listened to you, so now you listen to me.
Oh, he told us.
You sat here, and you wanna criticize what we're doing. You sat on the school board and took eight hundred thousand dollars and voted, and I'll go pull them minutes, out of a fund balance to balance the budget. You took one-time revenue and put that school district one million, eight hundred thousand dollars in debt. So you wanna talk about a track record of who knows finances and who don't know finances, and you think you did what was right for the school district, and you got the nerve to sit here and tell me we bought a backhoe when we came in a hundred thousand dollars over budget, not under bu, under budget, for two thousand and thirteen? You screwed this town up by the school taxes are the way they are today because of your decision that you made on the school board by taking one-time revenue to balance a budget. And that's a fact.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
And you cannot deny that.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Yeah, Mr. Devine, I'll debate this all night.
I know you will, and I appreciate that. Is, the idea, this is what you have to say. I was on the school board for probably how long? Three months?
Doesn't matter. You made a decision for the future of this town.
And I'm trying to make a decision here...
For the future of this town that jeopardized the school district, that jeopardized the future of the school, that these new board had to come in and make tough decisions on your mistake. If you didn't know what you were doing when you got elected, you should've abstained from voting.
Wait, are we going back?
No, you wanted to go back. You started to go back tonight. You're the one that wants to go back about the Borough Garage and tell Mr. Pez about a history lesson. Well, I'm giving you a history lesson right now. You screwed this town for a million six because you didn't know what you were doing. Let's talk about the facts, Tony.
Oh, I'm trying to...
That you balanced the budget with one-time revenue and buried the school district. That's a fact. And don't sit here and criticize this council.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
You wanna run your mouth? Well, let's talk the facts then.
And you've been here for two years. What have, what have you accomplished?
Nothing. All you did was create controversy in this council from the night you got sworn in to tonight. My recommendation is, we take Mr. Pez's recommendation that he wants to make and move on.
All right.
Give me, because you mentioned this in the hallway, and I agree with you.
Okay, so...
Your point right there. You're out of order right now. I'm talking to Mr. Pez.
You said I was gonna change.
I ain't talking to Mr. Pez, so put your hand down.
Right.
It's just my, in my estimation, if, if we're not going to come to a place where we can get a unanimous decision, I think for the sake of the taxpayers and for the sake of, of moving forward, that, that it's time to make a decision if, if, if we're not going to be able to come to a place where we agree.
I agree.
So, and that, that's kinda where I am.
I totally agree with you saying right now.
I have one quick question, if, if nobody minds. Mayor-elect Sabatini, the hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit that we now have on the police budget, how did you intend on making that up? By raising taxes?
No, Mrs. Trinell. And I'm glad that you brought that up, because now it's gonna be a little bit bigger. Because obviously, right now, the fire companies need money. So if we're gonna play the game...
That's another three hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm not playing the game. I wanna know how we're gonna make up your deficit.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, we don't need a part, we don't need a part, we don't need a full-timer. I think we can get away with, let's say, one part-timer. I'll be, I'll consent to that. I think as a secretary, we don't have to bring someone up from down below. I mean, I know we're having great success down there, as I was told from the mayor and the police chief. And, but at this point, I think financially, it'd be better off to bring someone in at the rate that we're trying to talk about with the contract at fifteen dollars at thirty-two hours a week. That's being fiscally accountable. Can we afford that hundred and sixty dollars? No. Hundred and sixty thousand, no. Can we afford what the fire police, or the fire departments need? Yes, we could give them more. And I think we could bend a little bit. As a whole group.
But you support it.
Well, I support it. I support it when I talk to Mr. Slack and Mr. Porter after tonight's change in venue. And I would like to come up tomorrow night and, and bring it up. We'll see.
Well, we, looks like we're not gonna have a quorum tomorrow, so I like to keep working. I think, I think what we need to do is agree on a concept tonight, and we could come back. Right, why don't you finish?
If we advertise, I mean, because obviously, since, since the two-point-five mil proposal, there've been a few other things that have thrown a little wrench into that, including a bit of the police budget and if we can help the fire company out at all. If we advertise five mils, are we bound to stick to that if over the next few weeks, we have a few things that maybe we can lessen it?
Get lower.
So my thought is, we advertise the five mils, and then over the next few weeks, we, or week, actually, isn't it? A week, four or five months? A week till our next meeting?
December ninth.
Ninth, okay. So over the next two weeks, we find as many things as we can that make it that we don't have to use the five mills, but I think we, we advertise the five mills and see what we can find.
Here's just my opinion on it. A budget is a guide. Things are gonna change throughout the year on a budget. The key is, right now, to authorize the manager to have the solicitor file for the five mills.
Right.
We're not saying that Pat can't have a secretary and Pat can't have a full-time employee, because six months from now, when we're all looking at these numbers, things may get a lot better.
Yeah.
You know, things may get a lot worse. I don't foresee that, I can't foresee things getting econ, the economy going any worse than it is right now. But to handcuff the new mayor and say, we're not giving you...
Yeah.
...a cop, we're not giving you a secretary, tell Herbie, we're, I don't think it's right. I think, we wanna sit here and play this political game and say, we're not voting, I didn't vote for a tax increase, I'm the one, who cares?
Well, let me tell you this...
We've been here for twelve years, this borough has never been any better, and if you had to take a survey, people in this town are very happy. And I think Mr. Sabatini will agree with that, because he voted for every expenditure that this borough's spent money on through the last twelve years sitting here, from borough buildings to exterior renovations, streets, traffic signals, borough building, we all agreed on everything. We're not gonna sit here and argue, because we can't get along, and I tried to do my best to make this a united council, but it's never gonna work. So I'm tired of it.
My thought is that we...
So your recommendation is to advertise for the five mills...
See what we can find.
Angie and Jim, monitor numbers for another week until we meet on Monday night at seven o'clock.
Yes.
And try to come up with where we are. If we have to increase our revenue through interest, everybody knows that if the, if we have to put a number in at four-hundred thousand, and that interest is only, comes in at two-sixty, and we're a hundred and forty thousand off, I don't wanna hear come December of next year, well, you raised that number, knowing we weren't gonna hit that much, because we really don't know. If we had a crystal ball, we'd all be millionaires.
And we're, and we're, we're hoping on one point five percent, right?
One and a half percent gets us another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a half a percent. If it goes to two percent, gets us another two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So my opinion is, can we stay flat for another year? Very possible. Like I said, it could be a few years, but it also can change things, and he said there's also ways that we could go out a little longer and guarantee that money, without touching